It is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call the Iowa City City Council formal meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Solie? We'll try her again. Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Solie?
Yeah.
There she is.
Great. Well, welcome everyone and our mayor pro tem is on the phone watching via Zoom. We can't see her, but she can see us and want to say welcome to everyone on today, which is July 6, 2021. Again, this is the Iowa City City Council meeting and this is our first meeting in person since last year in March. So happy to see everyone with us. Welcome back councilors. It's been awhile since I've seen us all together like this and to the staff as well and to the community members, we welcome you as well. Happy to have you here in the senior center. All right, first item on agenda is going to be items two through six, which is the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Taylor?
Second. Weiner?
If anyone from the public would like to address a topic that's in the consent agenda, I ask you to take the podium over here and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Solie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number seven is community comment. This is an opportunity where we give people from the community an opportunity to talk and we ask that you keep your comments three minutes. And if you would like to talk, please come to this podium and I will call upon you. And this is for any item that is not on our formal agenda. And at the podium, if you didn't do so outside, there will be a sign up sheet where you list your name, first and last, and your address. Welcome. Please give us your first and last name and your address.
First and last name, Temple Hyatt. My address is 1717 Grantwood Drive here in Iowa City.
Great.
Again, my name is Temple Hyatt. I've been a resident in the South District for nearly 40 years. I'm a committee member with the South District Neighborhood Association and I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. One year ago, this council repealed a gun safety ordinance prohibiting guns in local government buildings and on public transportation. I don't think any of you wanted to repeal the ordinance, but due to the state's punitive preemptive law, you felt you had no choice. Today, I stand before you with an opportunity to wash away that sickening feeling you felt when casting your votes. I share with you the lens of my gun violence prevention advocacy work, along with my participation in the amazing things that are going on in the South District of Iowa City. These are not my creations, but I see how wonderfully aligned these efforts are. Communities all across our country have adopted strategies to reduce gun violence by reshaping public spaces. This work is often called crime prevention through environmental design, as it involves deliberate efforts to change the physical environment to reduce crime and increase community safety. These programs encompass a wide variety of approaches and efforts to rehabilitate areas and make violence less likely to occur. Violence can be discouraged by these visible signs that a community is cared for and watched over. Examples of these efforts include community cleanup, gardening, beautification efforts, and murals. And I hope that sounds familiar because we've already done some of these things in the South District. Many of you know about the diversity market pop-up. Thank you to those that have stopped out and I invite all of you to join us on the last one this Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00. The diversity market is one example of the revitalization efforts possible under the South District's self-supporting municipal improvement district. And the SMID is a perfect example of a crime prevention through environmental design strategy. It's really amazing and exciting. I see those in the South District devoting countless hours towards revitalization, which is essential for these efforts to succeed. But we can't do it alone. We need help. So I urge the city council to commit to investing part of the American Rescue Fund in the South District to match the investment and current committed support to business and neighborhood revitalization efforts through the South District SMID petition. Gun violence is costly, but we can save hundreds of dollars for every dollar that's invested toward these efforts. This is an opportunity for the city to demonstrate good faith effort for this undeserved area of Iowa City and support efforts that can reduce crime and increase community safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Angie Jordan and my address is 1125 Apple Court, a fellow South District resident with Temple. I'm going to be kind of brief, three minutes. Here we go. I want to formally invite everyone here, everyone listening, city folks that work for the city, our council. You guys got to come to our last diversity market. It is a Saturday at 3:00. Temple talked about it. It goes till 7:00, but the fun happens from about 3:00 to 6:00. That's when the free face painting is, the bouncy house. This last one, we're actually going to be creating more space as requested by market goers and the vendors themselves, over 30. We have a waitlist. They want us to do more with the entertainment, so we're going to have some dancing, we're going to have some singing. We need you there. We need to see your faces. I need you to also know, and this is my serious face, this was 100% done by a neighborhood association and a South District business that has only been there for under one year. She's done a whole bunch of stuff. Tasha Lard, she's a JD Beauty Supply and she's in the former police substation. And I just have to point that out because the other parts of the team are the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, Dream City, Kingdom Center, and the Multicultural Development Center. None of us are getting paid to do this. We also, I personally, do this to revitalize my neighborhood and business entrepreneurial development, that's, believe it or not, a small piece, right? Like Temple was saying, we can't do this alone. So what I'm just putting out there for anyone who's listening to me is to invest in people like me. We've got so many incredible resources, but there's a disconnect, right? A disconnect to the actual people. So people like me and the Elizabeth Bernals out there and all those folks that are brown and women, I'm just going to say it out loud, we need investment so that we, our efforts, are sustainable, not for a department or an organization or a business to try to take what we've created and what we've been vulnerable to create constantly, having to prove ourselves and many folks not believing in us. This is a space and chance for our city to continue to believe in people like me and people like us. And when I say that, that is supporting efforts that are going to financially keep us sustainable. Okay? So I just want to say, you're invited Saturday. Come see how amazing and awesome it is and imagine what it would be like with even more support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Nice to see you all back in a room again. I wish I had something as fun as what Angie and Temple just had to talk about. And by the way, the diversity market is really great. You should stop by.
Will you please state your first and last?
Oh, sorry. My name is Nicholas Tyson. I live at 1430 ECU Drive. Sorry, I forgot that. So I guess I come here tonight with a question. And the question is, why does the city manager still have a job? Why is he still employed? Why is he still in the position that he is currently in? You see, the thing is, when you were having your discussion about the MRAP during the work session, you seem to have completely forgotten about what actually motivated you to send that letter last summer, because I actually remember those discussions. You said, "Mayor explicitly, we are not in favor of having militarized equipment." You didn't just say an MRAP. You said militarized equipment in our police department. And when it became evident that ICPD can use the county's MRAP basically whenever they feel like it without even asking, you were actually asked by a reporter why it is that that is the case. And instead of actually leading, you deferred to the real mayor of this city, which is Jeffrey Fruein. So the thing is, the reason why I asked this question, why does he still have a job, is because he and his subordinates acted directly against this council's stated wishes. It's in writing. It's not only in writing, it's been recorded. And now, I don't know, I mean, a lot of you own businesses, a lot of you have subordinates, but if you had an employee who literally did the exact opposite of what you told them to do, would they still be in a job? Would they still be doing whatever they feel like? Would they still get to run the police department however they feel? I imagine not. And the thing is, it's not just once. It's not just this one time. That same MRAP was staged twice against protests in this city last summer, including on the night in which ICPD officers tear gassed protesters, assaulted them, attacked them. So if I'm a little upset about this issue, if I'm a little irritating to you all, it's because I'm really sick and tired of you saying again and again and again, things like, "Black Lives Matter." "Oh, it's so important that we reform the police department." You're not reforming the police department. Jeffrey Fruein is reforming the police department to his liking. And what is he doing with it? He is expanding police power. And so the thing is, on the one hand, you have this feeling of like, "Oh, well, we're opposed to militarized equipment in the police department." But the second someone actually comes to you and says, "Okay, well then why is ICPD allowed to use this effing tank?" You demur. You defer to the person who actually runs this city, your city manager, who frankly should be out of a job. Fire Jeffrey Fruein now and if you don't, well, who cares what your opinions on these matters are?
Welcome. Please state your first and last name and your address.
Hi. My name is Dan Cobble and I live in Manville Heights. I'd like to first talk about the MRAP just because it came up in the work session. I'm sorry, but this council needs to take action now regarding this issue. The MRAP has been used disproportionately in BIPOC neighborhoods and let's be real, it's a form of racist terrorism. The alternative, a Bearcat, is less intimidating, but it's still a military vehicle. And because people think it's less intimidating than the MRAP, my fear is that it's going to be used more. And let's be real, I fear that city manager Fruein and ICPD, based on their histories, they're going to use it and use it more and terrorize people more because it's still a military vehicle. Another thing I would like to say just quick, I would like to voice support for the excluded workers fund. If you talk to folks from the Catholic Worker House, it's the testimony that they have in their presentations regarding it are very powerful, so I recommend everyone in this council become educated about it. Regarding the Project Better Together presentation that during the work session, I'd just like to say that some of those people are pretty bad actors in regards to BIPOC and immigrant businesses in our community and that should be taken into consideration and council should question them about it. Now, why I'm here, I would like to talk about city manager Fruein, because we should have known that Fruein would not save work to save our community from the terrorism of ICPD. Based on his statement from last year where he said, "I have not done enough addressing issues of police, overpolicing," he also went on to praise Iowa City Police Department. I mean, the statement was pretty disingenuous. And again, council said last summer that the MRAP has no place in law enforcement in our community. Yet Fruein has continued to use it as a form of racist terrorism, because that's what it is. The mayor, when asked by the press about the city's position on the MRAP, even deferred to Fruein. However, Fruein answers to this council. This council needs to take responsibility for Fruein's actions and Fruein's knowing disregard for the will of the council, who represents the people of Iowa City. Fruein's plan expands the presence of Iowa City Police in our community. And Fruein personally is not, this is not someone you want to have in charge of efforts to change the police system. Example, he got me arrested because I was peacefully demonstrating outside of his office. I stepped away from the building after city staff asked me to move and yet he still set armed policemen on me. So he's not a very good city manager. And frankly, the city council needs to hold him accountable for disregarding them. And he should be given an award for worse city manager. I wish I had one. Oh, wait. I do!
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Means a lot.
Welcome. Please state your first and last name and your address.
All right. My name is Noah. I live in Iowa City. And I'm just going to swing a second there, concerns about why Jeff here still has a job, but you should fire him today ideally, but tomorrow would work as well. Also, on the different note, I have a question for the city about why we have so few community gardens in our parks in the city when we have an abundance of open green space, where we could have parks feeding our community, giving nice local food to our people, having urban farms and just more plots for community members to garden in. So I mean, that's something that y'all really should do something about so we can grow food in our city instead of having it from our terrible food system we have currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Taylor Cohn. I live on 420 Church Street. Real quick, I also think Fruein should lose his job. I also think we have no business having an MRAP or a Bearcat. It's not a civilian armored vehicle, it's a military vehicle. And I also support the excluded workers fund. I also want to talk about how, at the end of this month, tenants, many of whom are students, have to deal with homeless week or the time in July and early August when lots of renters have a lease gap and nowhere to live or store their things. It's called homeless week, but some are two or three weeks long, by the way. Some renters are lucky enough to have families who can take them in during that time, but some people's families are far away or can't afford to or aren't willing to. Some students live in their cars during this week if they have one. Even in the best case scenario, homeless week means hundreds more dollars in moving expenses, in storage costs, or in the cost of the University of Iowa lease gap program, which charges people by the night to stay in the residence halls and doesn't include storage. Many students do not have that money to spare or to borrow from their parents. The Oberman Center recently shared a study that showed that 60% of students had missed a meal because they couldn't afford it. How many of them do you think can spend an extra $500 to move twice in one week? Homeless week, being a tradition that's gone on long enough to have a name, is just one way the city shows us you are not concerned with the needs of students as residents of Iowa City. Every time one of you says that we do have affordable housing, that there are ways that people can get over these barriers, that you've already been working on this project for a while and if there was a way to improve it, it would have happened by now, so you'll vote yes anyway, that's a slap in the face. When you say that what we have is good enough, the message is, it is okay that some people slip through the cracks, so you can turn your attention to single-family housing. And while one person slipping through the cracks is too much, this is not a case of the occasional exception to the rule. Let me remind you again that 60% of students missed a meal due to a lack of money. So many renters here are students taken advantage of by the likes of apartments downtown because they cycle out of here soon enough that you don't have to actually care whether this town is a good place for them to live. And everyone in this city suffers for it. When we don't have enough multifamily housing and what we have is set up to take advantage of students, what do you think that does to the rest of the community? Graduates often don't stay here because of this. Renters who aren't students suffer under the same tyrannical landlords. The remaining population of this city will get richer and whiter as a lack of affordable quality housing makes it difficult for marginalized and working-class people to come or to stay here. What you really have here is an emergency you're not dealing with while you congratulate yourself on the progress you've made. Also, I should say that, like, full-time, actual homeless people in the city are worse than abandoned, because homelessness increased an estimated 300% since the beginning of the pandemic. And what you have done this year, together with Public Works and the police, is steal from them, destroy their encampments, take their bags and their beds and their stoves, another one of your mistakes that Iowa City Mutual Aid is now trying to repair. They have an Amazon wishlist for this. You can find them on Google.
Would anyone else like to address any item not on the agenda at this time? Please take the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to close community comment. Thanks to everyone for that shared. Item number eight, planning and zoning matters. And we have 8A, which is rezoning Hickory Trail Estates. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 48.75 acres of land located south of North Scott Boulevard and west of North First Avenue from interim development, single-family to low-density, single-family with a planned development overlay zone. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Mims?
Second. Burgess?
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please take the podium. Welcome. Please state your first and last name and your address. And if you don't have a sticker, there is a little sign-in sheet there. And I should have told the earlier people as well.
Thank you. My name is Ann Signen. I live at 833 Cypress Court in Iowa City. And I would just like to address you, Mayor Teague, and the rest of the councilors and just say that my husband and I are just asking, we urge you as councilors to propose a change to the current plan that's being proposed by the developers and city staff. We request that consideration be given to eliminate the proposed throughway street that would go from Scott Boulevard to North First Avenue. Instead, we are asking that you please proceed, consider the original plan to have two cul-de-sacs. And this was a plan that was put forth by the Northeast District Plan and reaffirmed in 2013. This was originally planned, we believe, with a very thoughtful and strong purpose. We were told at that time that it was intended to minimize potential traffic liabilities at the intersection of North First Avenue and Hickory Trail and in addition, would help preserve the integrity and natural serenity along the perimeter of Hickory Hill Park. We ask you to please advocate on behalf of all of the citizens of Iowa City, not just the neighbors in the Bluffwood area. As one of our planning and zoning commissioners, actually two said it, but one stayed strong through the whole planning and zoning process. And as she said, "We need to get this right before it is finalized, because once it's done, there's no turning back." And I believe Councilor Thomas also had some suggestions for how this plan could be better. So we just ask for a better plan and that you do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Please state your first and last name and your address.
My name is Casey Court. I live at 435 Rundell Street and I am the chair of the board of Friends of Hickory Hill Park. I would like to mention something about citizen participation and I hope that now that we're back live, we don't take away the option to join by Zoom. That was a great way to get citizen input over the last year. Friends of Hickory Hill Park opposes this plan in its current form as it does not meet the planning goals of the Northeast District and Comprehensive Plan. 25 years ago, as First Avenue was being developed, the city made a promise to its citizens and enshrined those design into the Northeast District Plan. Friends of Hickory Hill Park did not exist at that time, but formed soon after, and many of our founding members sat in on those meetings and helped develop those plans. Since 2004, when we were keeping records, Friends of Hickory Hill Park has contributed over 15,000 hours, which is over seven work years, to the park to improve it. That's a value of over $320,000. And we've engaged 4,841 people in our workdays in the park. So here we are. The plans that came out obviously did not meet the Northeast District Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. The first two were terrible and we did meet with the developer and asked that they conform to the plan. It did get better with the single-loaded street, but we still feel that cul-de-sacs can happen and they should happen where it's important, environmentally important. And this is one of those places. The city council did approve cul-de-sac off of Rapid Creek Road just a few months ago when this same plan was up for a vote. So we asked, we did our part. We asked that you do yours. You can vote against this. We can get a plat that meets other city goals, including climate action and affordable housing. You just need the courage to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please take the podium. Welcome.
Hi. This is Dan again. I would just like to comment about some of the ways that the public hearings regarding this issue have been conducted over the last few meetings. Specifically, the last meeting, it was really frustrating and it looked really bad for the council to let the developers talk over the three minutes that had been allotted for them. The image that has come away from these public hearings regarding the Hickory Hill rezoning is that council does not care about the wishes of the ordinary people, because as, I mean, this issue has been up for a public hearing for, God, I don't even know how many meetings, but it's been quite a few. Lots of people have come out, lots of people who live near Hickory Hill Park, and I don't live near there, but I go there quite a bit and I see the beauty that they're talking about and the passion with which they want to defend it and prevent these, I mean, the encroachment of this development into that area. And for council to disregard the wishes of these citizens, it's frustrating. And I mean, it's the kind of thing that zaps people's confidence in their local government because the government takes the word of developers, of just the bigger guy. It doesn't listen to the people. And that's really what's been going on throughout the course of these public hearings. And even at the last one, the developer was talking about, "Oh, we've put all of this effort in and blah, 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 blah. We've met all the city requirements, so you should pass this through, blah, 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 blah." But, I mean, just because they've put all of this effort into it, it still does not meet the wishes and the demands of the people who live there, the vast majority of them. And so I would say that the council should vote against this until the community who's living there is in a greater, is more pleased with the Hickory Hill rezoning plan. Because until that happens, I think it's really messed up for council to go ahead and approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Well, I'll begin the conversation and what I've been trying to focus on over the last couple of weeks is to try to understand the process by which we got here and see if that provides any indication of how we might move forward. So I've prepared some comments in that regard. And, you know, I've kind of titled them, if you will, "Getting to Yes: A Project That All Stakeholders Will Support." The city council should always strive for outcomes that employ a win-win strategy. This is especially critical today. Iowa City faces great environmental equity and economic challenges requiring the efforts of all of us working together. The action should strive to bring diverse stakeholders together by working to find a common ground, strengthening community along the way. So what is the nature of a win-win strategy? Win-win strategies require a mediated, good-faith, public engagement process in which every stakeholder is at the table. Focusing on issues, stakeholders work together in a fact-finding effort. Together, they develop criteria and discover or invent options that fulfill those criteria, thus achieving mutual gain. The citizen planning process resulting in the Northeast District Plan was, in my view, such an effort. Through a negotiated conversation among stakeholders- such an effort. Through a negotiated conversation among stakeholders, it generated planning principles that were then fulfilled and depicted in illustrative form as a design option. Together, the principles and the illustrative plan gave Iowa City residents confidence that future development west of First Avenue, in that First Avenue extension, would preserve the natural integrity of Hickory Hill Park. Over the last several months, the public conversation over future development east of Hickory Hill has taken place at the Planning and Zoning Commission and now at City Council. The current application has generated considerable comment from the public and debate among P&amp;Z commissioners and city councilors. If the application is approved, the strategy has gone from a win-win to something else. For some, we have achieved a compromise that is consistent with the North District Plan, I'm sorry, the Northeast District Plan. In my judgment, the application's inconsistency with the Northeast District Plan results in a win-lose outcome. As I stated at our last meeting, the application does not satisfy the public's need for a sufficient buffer to preserve the natural integrity of Hickory Hill Park. It lacks the green open space buffer between the park and urban development described in the Northeast District Plan's neighborhood planning principles and depicted in the illustrative District Plan. The restorative benefits of Hickory Hill's natural park experience depend on a sense of being removed from the urbanized surroundings. This sense of being away will be significantly impacted by the visually prominent ridgeline development to the east. At our last meeting, I asked the council to consider that the many purposes of the planned development overlay, which have, in my judgment, been successfully utilized with the senior housing element, could also be applied to the west side of the property. Through a negotiated process, similar to what took place when the Northeast District Plan was developed, options for an adequate green space buffer could be discussed, as well as other economic equity and ecological considerations. It was also said at our last meeting that we should not sacrifice the good project for the perfect project. I ask that we not sacrifice a better win-win project on this important site.
At the last meeting, reading of this proposal, I was led to believe that, as a council, our hands were tied and that we had no choice but to approve it. I was uncomfortable with that, and it caused me to vote with some hesitation. Now that I've had three whole weeks to more thoroughly digest the many pages of information that we were given to us, I took a bit more time to discern the merits of the comments made by so many community members. Those individuals were not just saying that they didn't like the project, they were citing actual language from the comp plan and the Northeast District Plan. So I took a little more time this time around to look more carefully at those plans, and it seems that the individuals who wrote in had some sound arguments in regards to those plans. There does seem to be some inconsistencies between those plans and the impact of this proposal on Hickory Hill Park. These are some of the things I found in those plans, and I quote, "It should be managed such that the environmental quality of the community is not sacrificed. Balance development and buffer the park. Create public vistas. Protect the natural integrity of the park and minimize the visibility of residential development from the park. Keep development away from park perimeters. Discourage parks that are surrounded by private property." And also, I noticed that the buffer shown and mentioned in the plan is, actually, in the comp plans and Northeast Plan is one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred feet wide. The buffer in this plan is nowhere near that number. Also, the plan, as was mentioned, shows cul-de-sacs, but this proposal shows the through-street, which contradicts those plans. So it seems there are indeed inconsistencies between this proposal and the comp plan and the Northeast District Plan. We have plans in place to help guide us in our decisions, so why don't we follow them? Hickory Hill Park is seen as a unique treasure in that it is not a typical neighborhood park, such as Wella Creek Park or even Mercer Park. It is a natural park that people have described as a respite from city life, blissful and quiet. We need to do what we can to preserve that feeling. I'm not against development, but let's be sensible about it and follow the intent of the comp plan and the Northeast District Plan when making plans for development in this area. At this time, I would be voting against it.
This has gone through, I think, three planning and zoning meetings. Staff has had a lot of input with the developer and recommendations. One of the things that keep coming up is the cul-de-sacs. And that is something, and I think somebody, I don't remember the date, but I think somebody said the Northeast Plan was done like twenty-five years ago. I think what we have found many, many times is that when we have these comprehensive plans for various areas of the city, that they give us a concept of what we want, but also certain aspects of that change over time. And certainly, one of the things that has changed is with the planning, in the desire not to do cul-de-sacs unless they are absolutely necessary, from an emergency vehicle perspective and a safety perspective. So when we talk about that comp plan, I think it makes sense that not every aspect of that is going to be followed when you're looking at twenty-five years down the line. And also, as we've talked many times over the years, these are, if you will, aspirational. They give ideas. They are not specific plans, and that's why we do rezoning and get the actual plats and the specific layouts. I've been involved in these rezoning hearings for eleven and a half years on council. And I would say, we have some that are pretty easy and non-controversial. And we have others that are very difficult, and people have very different opinions of what we should do and what is particularly appropriate. You know, Councilor Thomas talked about, you know, mediated, good-faith criteria options, you know, design options. You know, in a perfect world, I would absolutely and totally agree with you. But I think when you get into certain aspects of some of these rezonings, I don't think those things are possible. I think the views are so divergent in what people want and what people have a right to do with their land. One of the things that staff made really clear to us was that this land was already zoned as interim development, single-family. And we either needed to approve this or certainly give the landowner developer a path forward in terms of doing it. We've talked about the buffer. I don't think there's anything ideal necessarily in this process or perfect in the way it's done. But given the extensive staff review, the three meetings by P&amp;Z, and the adjustments by the developer to get it through planning and zoning, I think it meets the Northeast comp plan. And while it is not perfect, I think it is very workable for that particular geography, and I will support it.
I agree. This is not an easy decision. Very grateful to hear from the members of the public who have come to multiple planning and zoning meetings, have written correspondence to our planning staff, to our planning and zoning commissioners, and to us as city councilors. I think one of the challenges that we have sitting in this seat is that our job is at the policy level, and we don't have the authority or expertise to say, well, this one specific thing could change, and maybe someone can come back with, you know, a better plan that might do A or B or C or D. Throughout the process, we rely on the staff, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the owner of the property, to provide us with a plan. And at the end of the day, we're here now with voting yes or no on what's in front of us. It's gone through several iterations. It's not perfect. It is a difficult decision. I love Hickory Hill Park. I've lived here my entire life and use that park regularly, all seasons of the year. I looked very carefully at the plans. How big is the buffer? Where is the existing tree line? What will be preserved and what will be enhanced? And I think it's important to remember, this is adding to Hickory Hill Park by over fourteen acres, that the buffer along the entire west side is at its narrowest, one hundred and sixteen feet, which is within the existing forested tree line, and at the widest is over five hundred feet. And so it's not that there is no green space. It's not that the development will be within the park. And so I will be continuing to support this project for this reading.
There are two aspects of this that I would like a little more information on, if I can get it. One is the issue of buffer, because it strikes me that if more buffer is needed in the way of evergreens or whatever, in order to mask the development from the trail and from certain parts of the park, whether it ends up being in, I think, Outlet A on city property or on the developer's property, that's something that ought to be completely doable. I don't know how that works, which is why I'm asking this question, when we're already on the second reading of this rezoning. We are required, I believe, that if we want to change or we have an objection, that there be a specific public need that be addressed, not a general need, such as affordable housing, which doesn't apply here, but a specific need to protect, say, a specific area, such as the park. So it strikes me that this would fall within that. My other question has to do with the question of the cul-de-sacs. I understand that in general, in city planning, cul-de-sacs are not preferred for all the reasons already articulated. However, I believe there's also an exception for specific areas, such as a park like this, when you're trying to preserve a particular area. So I guess my question is to city staff or to the city attorney, what can reasonably be done to, neither of those would have a significant impact on the proposed development. They would both allow the development to go forward, and they would, at the same time, address some of the specific issues that have been raised many times, and then allow everything to go forward. So my question is, what happens at this point if we wanted to change one or both of those? Obviously, my guess is that if it's on what ends up being city property, that's our decision to make. The question is, what if it's on developer property?
I'll try and see if I can address your questions. First, I'll agree with you. Anything that's on city property will be entitled to do as the city wishes. And as Councilmember Burgess pointed out, there's going to be fourteen-plus acres more of city property that we would then control, control that we don't now enjoy. Insofar as your other questions about compliance, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. Your question is, if we, as a council, don't think that it's compliant, is there something we can do about it now? Maybe I better just ask you to restate that part of your question.
Well, basically, is it possible to sort of, to shift somewhat to somewhat midstream like this, without essentially saying, we're not going to move forward? It's not that we're not going to move forward with this. It's a hypothetical, obviously. It's not that we're not going to move forward with this. It's that we would like to see one or both of those things, in addition to what's already been decided.
Well, I mean, obviously, one option would be just to communicate those wishes to the developer and ask that they, in good faith, take seriously the council's considerations for the development of their plan and how they wish to move forward. But if you're looking for something, you know, that would be enforceable, and would be a substantive change in the plan that's been put forth for your consideration today, that would probably have to be, well, if you're looking at a condition, for example, then that would have to be included as the conditional zoning agreement. That's already been signed. It's required to be signed before the close of the public hearing, which was at a prior meeting. So if that's something that the council wanted to pursue, you would at least need to reopen the public hearing, send it back for, you know, obviously, open it up for public comment once more, see if the developer is willing to make the changes you're proposing or that the council would submit. And then it would be perhaps going back to planning and zoning, depending on whether or not it's the kind of thing that they've already considered. If not, then they would need to be at least consulted before it comes back to the council for a first consideration. Is that an answer to your question, or have I danced around it?
It's probably as clear as my question.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I think what's important is that last piece that Eric just mentioned, and that's, you know, whether these topics were thoroughly discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. In case of cul-de-sacs and buffers, I would say, yes, those were thoroughly discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you wanted to move to a plan that does have two cul-de-sacs, I would think it's appropriate to start this process over, so that that full process, basically, the new project would be fully vetted from the start, particularly with the cul-de-sacs. That's a very, very significant change that would have impacts beyond just street layout. That impacts lot layouts, and that has a ripple effect through this whole process. That's a very significant change at this stage in the process. And then I would agree, if you're just looking for more vegetation on the outlot to provide that visual buffer, my recommendation would be to, you know, have city staff supplement that, once we take ownership of those fourteen acres, so that our forestry crews can have early-on, you know, hands in the design and implementation of that enhanced buffer, if that's something that you're seeking.
Thank you.
I also, I agree too that we need to talk about the cul-de-sac and the buffer. So I would really propose, even if it's going to take us to, like, start all over, you know, as Bolin or I guess John said in the beginning, we need it to be a win-win situation for the resident and for the developer. And as Bolin said, we are not against developer, but I really would like to see the problem, you know, to solve the problem that the residents have, and I raise, I mean. So I really would like to see if we can have the cul-de-sac and also, you know, the buffer, to increase the buffer, even if this is going to take us to postpone this and start all over. That's going to be my request.
At the last meeting, I think I requested that we see the buffer. Do we have any of the project here that we can see?
Daniel, do you have the packet or the presentation from the last time up?
Okay, all right.
Can we display the packet on the screen?
I can probably try to pull it up, with Daniel's help to find the right spot.
Well, I know that at the last meeting for myself, I wanted to see specifically, you know, all of the vegetation, and looking at the buffer specifically for this project. And so what I recall is, it wasn't perfect. Certainly, I know that we got some more correspondence that kind of, you know, envisioned what could take place. could take place for more buffer. And it's not that I'm not against it. I guess if we can maybe just walk through that again, I don't know if Danielle can show us.
Yeah, Danielle, can you come up and assist us in just trying to find the right exhibit in the packet there?
While they're finding that, so the cul-de-sac for me, I think we've had this discussion,
and I know it was mentioned that there was a project that just was approved with a cul-de-sac. So, I do know that some projects will be approved with cul-de-sacs, some won't. This one, as it was just mentioned, this would change the development, which is not the end-all for me. I do believe that this is an appropriate project for through-street. So, I'm not sure that the, my concern is not the, although I do hear the public mentioning this about the through-street, that I am more interested in re-looking at the buffer situation and seeing where we can, what additions we could do. If it is mainly on the city property, then, you know, is it worthwhile doing a good-faith request of the developer? I think that's something we could consider, not to say that having this process start over, if it needs to start over, then that's, it needs to start over. But for me, I think it's more the buffer. So, you have it up. Can you just give us a little overview, please?
Certainly. So, Outlot A is the area between Hickory Hill Park and the western edge of the development. The street's oriented north-south. On the screen, it's left to right. The lots are all completely along the east side of that street and only partially along the west side of that street. So, it results in a street that is only single-loaded, meaning houses only on one side of it for a large portion of that roadway length as it connects from the north to the east.
I'm sorry, are you able to move the mouse? I know you don't have the pointer.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, right. So, this is north, this is east. This is the area where there are a double-loaded street and then a single-loaded street for the remainder of it. I believe Councilmember Burgess mentioned the distances from the lot lines to property lines. I don't have that table with me.
It's on page 318 of the PDF.
I have a different PDF open at the moment, so that's not going to help. But anyway, so there's a different width here. That's kind of the narrowest between a lot line and the property edge, and then additional Hickory Hill Park land would be in this area. Sorry, I'm not probably helping too much with that. Yeah. Is there one with a line on it? I think I forget.
The next one has the.
Is that it, Jeff?
Maybe one more.
I have no idea what they want at this point. Does that help, Mayor? Do you need something else?
No, I wanted to really get the overview of what we're looking at for the buffer currently, as well as the green space. And I think, at least for me, you've done that. I don't know if anyone else has questions for Danielle.
Well, since we're showing some of the images, Danielle, could you show an image of the illustrative plan from the Northeast District Plan?
Maybe in the staff report here. Image on the left?
Yes, so now, north is up. Scott Boulevard is to the north, and First Avenue is on the right side there. So, you know, we're talking about the buffer and the cul-de-sacs. In some sense, they're being described as discrete elements. And I would want to say that it's, the buffer is actually, part of the buffer concept is that separation that occurs between the two cul-de-sacs is shown in this drawing. So, the area that is of most concern with respect to the proximity of development to the park is where that cul-de-sac off of Scott Boulevard ends. That section south of that cul-de-sac toward the bottom corner there is where there's the sensitivity in terms of the impact of development on Hickory Hill. The other benefit, which isn't articulated in the narrative, but is, in a sense, articulated in the image, is that the other benefit of the way in which this configuration is shown is that the natural area of Hickory Hill is then connected to the natural area to the east, that ravine. If you look at the image on the right side, you can see how the proposed development runs through continuously, and so that connection between the natural area of Hickory Hill and the ravine to the east remained as discrete natural areas rather than being connected, which has its own value. So, the question of the buffer, the question of the cul-de-sacs are in some ways interrelated. And so, I think it's important to understand that the cul-de-sacs are not just simply a circulation element in the plan. They actually serve an ecological function, and they also serve as a way of being part of the buffer concept as it relates to making sure that development doesn't impact the natural character of the park.
So, I guess, John, since you're mentioning that, my assumption is with the current proposed plan, if there was going to be, because we got some correspondence today that was Jess pointing out how the buffer.
Yeah, that letter from Martha Norbeck is based on the assumption that the current proposal goes through. So, if it goes through, this is how one would address the need for screening, the need for a buffer, given that configuration that is shown in the current plan.
And a significant part of this is really city.
What is?
Of this.
While they're looking at, can I ask a question? What's the total width of the street and sidewalks approximately?
About 60 feet?
So, the right-of-way for a local street in the neighborhood is 50 feet. The pavement, 60 feet, sorry. The pavement would be within that, and the sidewalks would be just within that as well.
Okay. So, when I'm looking, and I think I'm looking at the same page Laura was, and tonight's packet is on page 318 of the packet, it shows the distance, the closest distance to a lot is 116 feet from Hickory Hill Park. And then, it doesn't show exactly on the right-of-way, but just as it starts to curve on the very south end, it shows a measurement of 159 feet, which is to the inside, probably the inside of the right-of-way. So, if we take approximately 60 feet for that full right-of-way, we still have roughly 99 to 100 feet of city property between the outside of the street sidewalk, if there's one there, and current Hickory Hill Park. So, for me, when I look at that, that we essentially are adding 100 feet to Hickory Hill Park linearly along that street, and the idea that we can direct staff to direct the forestry division to really look at ample screening along there, then I think with 100 feet, we can get quite a bit of screening to protect that view from, you know, from these properties and from these houses back into Hickory Hill. And obviously, if we need to put more trees in the existing Hickory Hill Park to help with that screening, it would be city property, and we would have that opportunity as well. So, for me, I think we can work well with the buffer that's there to do the screening that we need to do, if that's deemed necessary, which obviously, I think a lot of people feel that is really important. I haven't walked it, so I don't know exactly what there is there for trees and what more we should put in.
And just to clarify, as we look at the diagram, so in our late handouts, we got correspondence from Martha Norbeck, and I agree with you, John, that this was premised on the current version of the plan. But I believe the entirety of the additional buffer that she was recommending is on city property, so within that Outlot A, what would be conveyed to the city.
And I appreciate you bringing up the, kind of, the distance, because I think that at the last meeting, that was also pointed out. I certainly wanted to get a clearer picture tonight, once again, especially since residents have come forth consistently about the buffer area. I think it is important to, you know, do what we can to make sure that there is a buffer to really protect the natural feeling within the park. And so, being that, you know, all of the proposed, not to say that this is what we need to go by Martha, by one of the late handouts, I believe that we can direct our city staff to create this buffer. And so, with that being said, I will support this project tonight.
I believe that Martha Norbeck's letter referred to running the path, running or walking that path, and that in order for there to be appropriate screening, there would need to be, from what's going to be built, to preserve the natural, that natural sense, there would need to be additional buffer put in there. Evergreens or something that's also fast-growing in order to help screen that and preserve the natural sense.
Any more discussion on this item, or are we ready for a vote? And Council Wyner, did you get all of your questions answered?
More or less, yes. I guess my question is, if we, can we, as, if, can we, as part of this, direct that city staff and forestry or whomever work closely with the landscaper of both our own lands, forestry and the landscaper who's working with the developer to ensure that it's done and done well? Because, I mean, there are plenty of reasons to put in more trees. Just one of them is, as a buffer, climate-related and so forth as well, as not to mention the fact, not to mention the part of the tree canopy that we lost from the Rachel last year. So, it all, there is, it all adds up to very good reasons, from my perspective, to ensure and to be positive, both for ourselves and for the residents here, that this would happen.
I can answer that. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
No, I'm just want to talk to Council Wyner. I think we need really to do it properly and to make sure we are doing it for the resident and for the developer. We should just go ahead and direct the, you know, not only direct, because as, you know, our city manager said, in order to do this, this is have to go back and start all over. And if we really want to do that, let's do it. Why not? Why we are in hurry? We can do it. If we really, I think, I don't know where you're standing now, because I think that is clear, like, majority is saying that we need the residents to, like, become satisfied. So, let's do it.
I just wanted to offer, in response to Council Wyner's comments, that council has directed us as staff to supplemental landscaping before with rezonings. The last one that comes to mind was the Forest View rezoning. Council requested that we initiate street tree planning in the Mackinaw, which was the adjacent neighborhood to the Forest View area. And as you know, that street tree planning is going on this year. So, that's probably the last example. I also want to mention that our forestry and horticulture staff was involved in the review of the landscape buffer that's currently proposed, so they are very familiar with this buffer. And again, if council wanted to direct that, we even do further supplements to what they were involved with crafting, that we can absolutely do that, again, on Outlot A, once it becomes our property or within the existing park.
I just wanted to note, in the conditional zoning agreement itself, page two of that agreement, which is on page 603 of our packet, does say that contemporaneous with the final plat approval, the subdividers agreement has to include a woodland management plan that would be prepared by a woodland specialist and approved by the city forester, and has to be completed before we would accept the Outlot A dedication, and also the landscaping plan being approved by the city forester as well. So, I guess maybe just a question for staff, is with the conversation that we're having tonight, is that sufficient to kind of direct what the city forester might deem adequate in that plan?
Yes, I think this conversation can inform that review.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I would just make a final comment. It seems clear to me that it is the majority, if not unanimous, opinion of the council, that we want to make sure that there is a sufficient buffer there in terms of the planting of trees, and that there's no question whether we need an additional resolution or just additional direction to staff, or if they have enough direction at this point, that we will make sure that happens. So, basically, that becomes a separate issue to me from the actual approval of the rezoning tonight, because we can and will make that happen based on the will of the council.
But what about the cul-de-sac? Is that could be happen also? Yes, we can direct the city manager and the staff to do that?
No.
Okay, then.
We can work, so what we would do is, we can, even when we return with the plat, we can describe the approach that we're going to take, so our forestry staff can dive into this immediately and give you those thoughts when the plat arrives. But yes, we can do this, and we can follow through, just like we do with any number of other directives that you provide.
Can you do cul-de-sac too?
No, that would have to go through the legislative process, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just quickly emphasize that, you know, one of the questions before us is this question of consistency with the comprehensive plan and the Northeast District Plan, which did include, for, as I tried to articulate, a variety of reasons. Those cul-de-sacs were kind of, were a critical element in terms of the buffer, as we've been describing it. They were a critical element in the sense of connectivity between the natural areas that are really the dominant feature of this area. It's mostly natural area. And so, the cul-de-sacs were providing a way in which these natural areas could be connected, which is, in terms of natural area policy, you know, it's something where we're not simply trying to preserve natural areas but enhance them, and this would be an enhancement. And then, as some have said, the question of traffic, I think, does, and on all of these issues, obviously, one has to exercise their own judgment. But the, I think, the question of through-traffic, from my point of view, is a valid one, as it relates to the intersection at First Avenue. And so, there's that aspect as well. Cul-de-sacs, in my view, are something that are really, need to be considered and evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And so, it was for all these reasons, I think, why you see the And so it was for all these reasons, I think, why you see the cul-de-sacs in this particular plan.
I did just want to make mention that our work session, at least the plan for me, is that we'll start the conversation of rezoning, just zoning, in our next work session, which will be on July 27th. So, because this is a point of contention where we're looking at old plans and we're trying to place current values on them. This may not be the perfect example, but when we're talking about affordable housing, that not even being an option of discussion for this plan. So on the 27th, we will have that conversation. If nothing else, I will call this to a vote.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Wyner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three. Item number, oh, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mims. Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number nine, 2021 Summer Sidewalk Repair. Solution approved in project manual and an estimate of cost for the construction of the 2021 Summer Sidewalk Repair Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Good evening. Jason Hovel, City Engineer. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the sidewalk repair program. So for this program, we divide the city into 10 sections, and typically what we'll do is, the first year, we'll go through in one section, and we'll go, we'll have city staff go out and inspect existing sidewalk locations. What we're looking for is areas that have damaged panels, tripping hazards, other safety issues, and so we'll mark those squares. And then, once that inspection is complete, we notify the adjacent property owner, and then they typically have a couple of options for making those repairs. They either have until the following May to make those repairs themselves, or they can opt to have it included with the larger city project, which comes through and repairs any unrepaired sidewalk panels in that section. So this year's section, we call it Section Five, is roughly the College Green area and some surrounding areas. It's the area that would be bordered approximately from the river on the west to Seventh Avenue on the east, and then Burlington Street on the south up to Jefferson and Rochester. So that's kind of the approximate area. So again, this would be, in that area, it's a program that will go through, will hire a contractor, they'll go out and repair any unrepaired areas. So that would be anything that the property owners haven't repaired since the inspections last year, or if it would be anything that would be city-owned squares, or those squares that, again, haven't been repaired yet, that were inspected last year. So that's a very brief overview, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please take the podium. Welcome. We ask that you give your first and last name and your address.
Mohamed Traori, address 1002 Hillside Drive, Tiffin, Iowa. So I would just like to ask, in terms of this plan, why is it that it's purely focused on downtown, from what I'm hearing, in the east side of town? Why aren't we looking at anything in the South District in this?
We can't answer that, but this is a citywide plan.
From what I just heard, the focus was on central locations to the city. I never heard a street that was in the South District, so I would just like to know if that is going to be left to those residents to take care of on their own?
I think what we'll do is, when we get to-
Jason's coming back up to answer.
We can't answer any questions from the public, but we do hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Do you want to, and I should have asked you to sign your name on, it's on the side of the stage, on the side of the podium. Anyone else like to address this topic? I think we can answer that during council comment. Welcome.
Hello, Noah, again. So you are all of our employees, so why can't you answer our questions?
This is an opportunity for you to express to council anything that you want to express.
Yes, that's why I wanted to express is, why will you guys not be responsive to the community you're supposed to represent?
Any other comments?
Yes. Act like a democracy and respond to your people, and actually listen to when your constituents talk to you. And fire Jeff Frum, just again, just because.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One thing I can add is, as I mentioned, this is one of 10 areas, so every 10 years we do go through the entire city. So this just happens to be the year that we're focusing on Section Five. So every 10 years, we do make a complete round throughout the city.
Thank you. Any more comments? I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Thomas.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wyner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, Glendale Park Improvements. This is a resolution approved in project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Glendale Park Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome.
Hi, my name's Ethan Yoder, and I'm a civil engineer with the City of Iowa City. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the project. So the plan for Glendale Park is to install a new playground, concrete sidewalk from the entrance back to the playground, and then also include an open shelter. And we did hold a public open house to get some feedback on that as well. And then, on this slide here, is the mock-up of the playground. It was chosen to go with earth-toned colors, and construction will be completed this fall. That is it.
Right. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium. Welcome back. State your name and address, or you can just state your name again.
Mohamed Traori. I would just like to ask, when it comes to this park project here, is this one also going to include one of those bike fixing transfictions? One thing I've heard from the South District is that when it came to the Weatherby Park project, that they didn't get any funding for bikes actually there. So when it came to properties to, or just things to fix bikes in that area, they didn't get that, and they had to come up with the funding themselves. And also, when we look at redoing all of these parks, and we really need to remember that we do have an area of this town where we do see kids that don't have a lot to do in the summer and that are going through a lot right now. So I would like us to focus a little more on the South District as well, before we just keep going around and expanding these other parks and just putting all this money in these other spots and places. I'd like to see something such as a permanent air pump in the Weatherby Park area, because a lot of these kids don't even have the money to buy air pumps for their basketballs. So they're not using the park, and that's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move.
Solid.
Second, Mims.
Counsel discussion.
I had the chance to see this park on a recent Parks and Recreation tour, and very glad to see the sidewalk installation. It's kind of this long, narrow park, and being able to access the playground from the street with the sidewalk going into the park, I think, is great. And I base that on my experience at Weatherby, where they just installed the paved trail and just made parts of the park much more accessible. So glad to see that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wyner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11, Pastel Place Storm Sewer Improvements. Resolution approved in project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Pastel Place Storm Sewer Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ben from Engineering. I was going to give us just a quick presentation of the project. So this is the Petzel Place Storm Sewer Improvements Project. It's a fairly straightforward project. I'll just show you guys quickly where the project is, what the problem is, how we're going to fix it, and then we'll talk about the schedule. So the project's located on the west side of town, between West High School and Mormon Trek, roughly. We'll zoom in here a little bit. This is more specifically where the project is, and keep your eye on that cul-de-sac. So that cul-de-sac floods when we get a fairly significant rain, and there are actually three things going on here. One is we've got an inverted cul-de-sac, meaning that the middle is actually lower than the outsides, and we've got a small, small pipe size that drains that area, and it also has a beehive that tends to clog up. So the proposed fixed is just to replace the existing pipe with a larger pipe and put in a couple of different structures that don't clog quite as easily, and then we'll reconfigure the entire end of the street and raise the center part of it, so it doesn't flood quite so easily. Estimated cost is $220,000. We'll take bids July 20th, and hopefully be awarding a contract at your next meeting on the 27th. Construction to start roughly in August and be done by the end of the season, end of October, November. Does anyone have any questions?
Don't hear any, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Wyner.
Second, Taylor.
Counsel discussion.
How does an inverted cul-de-sac get built to begin with? I mean, that doesn't, it doesn't seem to make sense. Yes, it has to get fixed, but to have something that drains the wrong way, is that, was that something that was built by the, put in by the developer when that area likely was developed? How does, Ben's back?
The quick answer is, that's how they used to do them 40 years ago. I don't really know the answer.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wyner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, Comprehensive Master Plan for Recreation Facilities and Programs. Resolution authorizing the procurement of consultant services for a comprehensive master plan for the City of Iowa City Recreation Facilities and Programs.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Barker. I'm the Recreation Superintendent with the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'm going to have you hold for one second.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Move.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Sully, and now go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Like I said, my name's Brad Barker. I'm the Recreation Superintendent with the Iowa City Parks and Recreation Department, and the resolution before you tonight would approve the procurement of professional consulting services for a recreation master plan, to really look at our facilities and our programs that we have in our department. And this would be a 10-year master plan that would really kind of guide the direction of our department over the next decade. The primary goal in creating this plan would be to prioritize resources to provide aquatic and recreation facilities, along with community recreation programming that is equitable, accessible, and responsive to the community's needs and requests. Central to the creation of this master plan would include a comprehensive needs assessment with the community, and extensive outreach to the underserved population, because we, one of the things that we do recognize is that we have a lot of people that utilize our facilities, and we hear from them all the time on different things, on what their wants and needs are, but we don't necessarily hear a lot from the community that doesn't participate in our recreation programming and come to our facilities, and we want to find out why. So that's going to be a real driving force behind this recreation master plan, so that we can better meet the needs of the community as a whole. Also, we're also going to be focusing on the City Park Swimming Pool. It is in its 72nd summer, so it is an aging facility, to say the least, and it's critical that we come up with a plan for the future outlook of the outdoor swimming pools that we have. Our recreation centers also are aging a bit, too, and so we wanted to really do a thorough assessment of structural integrity, but then also if they're also meeting the needs of the community as well. The project will not include playgrounds, trails, splash pads, outdoor shelters, restrooms, or natural areas and parks, as those were part of the master plan, of the Parks Master Plan in 2016, and the Natural Areas Plan in 2017. Ultimately, with this project, this RFP that we put out, we received eight proposals. We interviewed five of those firms, and ultimately, we wanted to go down a different path with this recreation master plan than what, a lot of what they're used to. They're used to doing Parks and Recreation master plans, and we've broken it up into two different sections there, and kind of going back to the community engagement side of things. We really wanted to find out what are some of the barriers to residents participating in recreation programs, and really delving into that, so kind of taking a unique approach to their community engagement methodology. And so we wanted to hear from them on their approach to that, and if that's something that they're comfortable with doing. And so ultimately, we landed on, our recommendation would be Barry Dunn Consulting Firm, and they are a well-established independent municipal government consulting firm, and they have a branch of their firm that specializes in Parks and Recreation master planning. And so they've done a lot of different projects like this, and they're very adaptable to kind of tailoring their approach to the needs of the community, and so we really felt comfortable like we would be able to have a good partnership with them. They also have a unified team of architects that they work with, that would be analyzing our recreation centers and swimming pools, a team that they work with on a regular basis. So they integrate a few other architectural firms with this project, but they have a lot of experience working together as a team. And so ultimately, our recommendation would be to move forward with Barry Dunn Consultants for a one-year agreement for this master plan in the amount of $145,000, $145,670.
Okay. Questions for Brad? I have a question.
Yeah.
So will this also include potentially new records, like, facilities?
Yes.
Potential, okay.
Yep, yep, kind of looking at, are the current facilities meeting the needs, and are there other potential locations or other types of facilities or amenities that the community would want?
Great, thanks.
And where? Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please approach the podium. Welcome.
Hi, this is Dan again. I'm really happy that they're focusing on City Park, because, and the- and the pool there, because, I mean, some of the things that were brought up were things that I visited, I visited it a few times this summer, and it does kind of need some upgrades. It's a really good facility, but I think kind of more expanded concessions and other such things would be good. But that said, I think that we still need to focus on making sure that these facilities are accessible to the public, because right now, like if you want to go swimming in the evening, it's like $2 to go. And it's a very reasonable rate. But my concern would be upgrading these, upgrading these facilities would cause the cost to go up. And so I think we want to make sure that we keep an eye on the fact that keeping these facilities accessible and affordable for the public. And also just keeping an eye on how well all of this is serving the community as a whole, and making sure that it's accessible, that these things and these improvements are accessible to everybody across the board. Thank you.
Welcome again.
Mohamed Trair, again. I don't think there's any way this plan for this consultant group should be passed if they don't look to immediately hire on someone that lives in the South District, because we're talking about getting actual representation from minorities in the community and people that are underserved. A big reason you don't hear from them very much is because they're never at the actual table when it comes to making these decisions, and they don't trust you guys. So it's really important to give them a power position, because that's the way they're going to bring the rest of the community that lives in these areas to the table to make, to help make these decisions. Such as when it comes to the actual plan right now for how the American Rescue Plan funds are going to be distributed. The reason you're not getting minority voices in this is because you're not directly going to minority communities to ask them what they want. You're just putting it online. And a big issue with that is, if you don't see the social media post, if you don't see the actual email, you're not going to answer the survey. A lot of these people are working overtime jobs. They're working two jobs, so they are not seeing your emails. They are not seeing your social media posts that you're putting out maybe once every other week, maybe once a month. So I think that's something that should be really considered here. And additionally, I think a very good spot for a new community recreation center would be right next to Dream City slash the Kingdom Center. There's an empty lot right there. So we're talking about accessibility. How about we put it in the neighborhood with a lot of minorities and underrepresented people so they don't have to go downtown or to the north side of the city, wherever else you're going to decide to put these new facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? All right, counsel discussion.
And I think both the, I'm glad to hear that this is supposed to be looking at the entire community and accessibility for the entire community, because my sense is that both, both the south side and the west side are seriously underserved, that it's very difficult for people, particularly young people who live in those areas, to get to any, to get to any of the current facilities. And I also take Mr. Torrey's point that we've seen that, and we've seen this also when we've been talking about things like getting buy-in for vaccines. We need people from the communities to go into the communities, to talk to people in the communities, and be where they are, meet them where they are, so that we can really get a better understanding of what their needs are. And that needs to be, in my view, built into this plan.
Especially when, if this have like really new, another new recreation center, as you know, said, the west side, a lot of people on the west side being talking about this, and the west side also need, you know, a recreation center. But, you know, the internet kind of not connecting well when he was talking about the survey. Where are we advertising the survey? It's just on the website, or how we get, like, the minority to vote on the survey, or to allow this survey?
Yeah, that's a great question. So with the survey, so we're doing, we're doing a couple of different methods. So with the surveys, we opted not to do a statistically valid community need survey for just recreation programming as a whole, because we really wanted to be able to get more out into the community on a personal basis. So we're looking at doing this in the summer, the remainder of the summer, and into the fall is going to be a big part of our community engagement side of things. And so we're actually wanting to get out into the community, make those connections with the stakeholders within the community, so that we can hear feedback from people that may not necessarily have access to email or to the internet on a regular basis, but have more of that face-to-face interaction. So we plan to get out into the neighborhoods to be able to make those connections for this. But there will also be online options, electronic surveys as well. With the statistically valid survey that we're going to be doing for the pool side of things, we, we're going to have that be the typical methodology that they would use for that, to make it a statistically valid survey. But they, but people will also be able to comment online. They'll be able to go on after the survey is completed. They'll be able to come into our recreation centers if they wish. We also have a lot of different events out in the parks through our rec and roll program, our party in the parks, where we also plan to have a lot of community engagement as well. So trying to get out to those different neighborhoods to be able to make that face-to-face interactions.
That's great. You know, I really appreciate that. But to add to this, if either to translate it, or to have, the people who are going to engage with the community have to be bilingual. We need those kind of things, so we can, you know, just, when we talk to the people, we talk to them by their language, you know, using their language. So either translate the survey, or the people who are going to make the engagement to be bilingual.
Yep. And so Barry Dunn has experience working with diverse communities with their, with their needs assessments and their master planning. And so I believe that they did mention that that is a possibility. We also have some people on staff that are able to help with translation services. And then also, we have a firm that we use for translation services where needed as well. So that's a great point, and that definitely be something that we'd want to be able to do with this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think you're good. Thanks.
I'm happy to see that the thought to hire a consultant. We've been very successful in the city with consultants, with our transit system, and with our environmental issues. So I think it's a good idea. I appreciate Mr. Torrey's comment about the Dream Center. For those of you who don't know, it's just an excellent place and does a lot for young people. So a location near there would be wonderful. So I do hope, and I know myself, and I know Royce Ann Porter from the supervisors, and I think probably the mayor, several of us have, have met with people from the South District at certain events that have been held there. And we have heard that from people in the past, that we need some type of rec center, not just the Robert E. Lee Rec Center downtown, but someplace where youth can go to congregate after school, to recreate and study, have study help, those kinds of things. So I do hope that the consultant takes that into consideration. A big part of other consultants have been getting community input with forums, et cetera. So I hope they do look into that and take the South District and the west side, being a west sider, as Janice Weiner had said, that would be an excellent location, too.
One of the reasons why I asked the question earlier about the facilities, if it would be considering new facilities, is because certainly on the south, in the South District, we've heard continuously for a need for, really a recreational center. Growing up in Chicago, I know that for myself, that's kind of where I got a lot of support through community facilities. And so I think it's very important that we open up the survey, make sure that we get it to people that are typically, you know, we need to make special outreach to people in the community. And I think that we're going to be surprised at some of the needs that people voice. And so I'm happy that I can take the survey personally, and I look forward to it.
Yeah, I think this is a great, an important step in terms of understanding our assets and liabilities as a public entity, and being able to apply, at this point, you know, the question of equity environment and so forth, as we move forward. I do think this emphasis on youth is really important, and I think with youth, access is a critical factor. So how, how do we make sure that our youth, our kids have easy access, safe, easy access to recreational facilities? And in that regard, you know, I've tended to favor the notion of a distributed system, because the more distributed it is, the more easy it will be for, for kids who are not able to hop in an automobile to access these places. And with that in mind, it does raise issues of cost. I mean, you know, okay, so we try to expand the system, make it more accessible. We're talking about new facilities. Those are expensive. They're expensive to build. They're expensive to staff. Recreation is a very expensive part of our, of our services. So one, one strategy that I've always been interested in is how can we join together with other public entities to see if we might share the facilities through joint use agreements? So, you know, working, certainly with the school district, for example, might be an opportunity there to see if their facilities could expand their programming, so we don't need to build a new building, which we then have to maintain for perpetuity. So anyway, I think it's a great step forward. We, we right now are kind of in the dark as far as our recreational needs and their costs that are associated with them. So, you know, this is, this is a wonderful, important piece.
I would agree. And I think another piece that really needs to be considered with it, and maybe it's not part of the survey, but something I think the city needs to be thinking about going forward after this, and that you talk about accessibility, is what kind of transportation does the city need to provide? Because you can't build, you can't afford to build enough recreation facilities so that every kid in the city can walk to a recreation facility.
So the bike is the other piece.
The bike and buses, yeah. Bikes, trails, buses, that potentially are special routes during certain times of the year, after school, or whatever, to really make those facilities accessible. So again, it does come back to what you're saying, John, is, you know, the expense is something that's going to be, going to be a real serious consideration. I totally agree with the idea of trying to do agreements with other entities. And the school district obviously has facilities in Iowa City. What I have seen in the past, having been on school board and the years on council, is the challenge there is their facilities are, number one, incredibly busy. And when they're not busy in the summer, it's because of maintenance, and so you can't get into them because they're maintaining them. So it's certainly worth looking into. I don't mean to diminish that, but it will be a challenge.
I'm grateful to see that this proposal is not just for facilities, but also for programming and approaching, you know, fresh look at programming for our underserved populations, especially. I think we, there's probably a lot of opportunity. And as I think, Mayor, you mentioned, we may be surprised of what people want and what we can make available. So not just building new facilities, but having programming as well.
All right. Sorry, I've already closed public comment. All right. Any more comments? Hearing non. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 13, we're at council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. And this is 13A, which is Historic Preservation Commission, North Side. We have one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023. And we can probably do both of these at the same time, which is 13B, Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, effective July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. And, all right. So with the north side, we have one vacancy, and it's non-gender. Both of these are actually non-gender. And I guess both of them, we only had one applicant. So thoughts?
I would support both applicants.
Yeah, I would as well.
Same here.
I agree.
Both look quite, actually, well qualified.
I would move that we appoint Deanna Toman to the North Side, Representative for Historic Preservation, and Kevin Larson for the Wood Lawn District.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. We're at item number 14, announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must, must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. And then we are at announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be...
Mayor, sorry, could we get a motion to accept correspondence on the new one?
Oh, yes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Item 15, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, effective upon appointment, through December 31st, 2021. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, Licensed Electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Eastside College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are at item number 16 with the US, UISG. So welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. So student government is just currently establishing our initiatives and reviewing our platform for the upcoming year. And we expect the Board of Regents to approve a $280 tuition increase. So we're just currently brainstorming ways to reduce costs for students in other ways. We've reached out and connected with a couple of you to collaborate our ideas. So if any other of you, any others that we haven't met with yet, if you have time in the coming weeks, we'd like to connect with you on ways to further those, those ideas. So, thank you, guys.
Great, 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 great. All right. Item number 17, city council information.
I would just like to congratulate Johnson County on being the only county out of 99 in the state of Iowa to not only meet, but blow by the president's vaccination goals. It is really essential right now that people continue to get vaccinated. The CDC has just declared the Delta variant to be the predominant variant circulating in the United States. You protect yourself, you protect your loved ones, you protect people who are immunocompromised, and you protect the kids in our community who are, who cannot yet get vaccinated by yourself getting vaccinated. So please continue the good work. We have a lot to be proud of in, in, in this county for reaching the vaccination levels that we have. Let's please
I'll just mention that this Friday, this Saturday, as Angie Jordan mentioned, it will be the last Saturday for the diversity market, which has been held at the Kingdom Center, and that's going to be Saturday, the 10th, from 3:00 PM till 7:00 PM. So I encourage people to come out.
I agree with that, Mayor. It's a really, really good time and awesome to see what community organizing at that scale can do. Pretty, pretty powerful. Also, just want to note, our new transit fairs went into effect today, which was mostly improvements, right? Free fare for additional members of our community, making, lining up with Correville Transit. So please see our city website for all that information with new routes going into effect August 11. So please see our city website for all that information, with new routes going into effect August 2nd. So hopefully, but everyone's keyed into that.
Yes. Any other comments? All right, City Manager, item number 18.
No update tonight, thanks, Mayor.
All right, our Assistant City Manager?
Nothing from me.
All right, Attorney?
Nothing from me either, thank you, Mayor.
And our City Clerk? All right, we get off easy tonight. Item number 19, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Thomas, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, we survived our first meeting in person after over a year.
Including somebody who's on a different continent, right?
Yes.
The whole country, whole different country.
Okay, thank you, everyone, bye.
Thanks, Maz.
Good to hear you.
Good to hear you, Maz.
Stay safe.
All right, you too, guys, thank you.
Yes.